Challenge for us. Has been the challenge for us internally is to be more proactive about what we want to see in Bridgewater and less reactive for generations, I think. You've simply been reactive. Someone comes in, says this is what they want to do, and we send them to the planning board or the ZBA. You know, that's that's some form of what they want to get gets implemented. And that's not all that, but certainly it's better for a community to say proactively what it actually wants. And so that's essentially what what this is about. This is beginning I've discussed about what we actually want. In Bridgewater and then shaping the community around what we actually want. So the pieces have sort of fallen into place for us. Bob really is, you know, Bob has joined us, seems like five years ago now. And and Kim Williams has been working with Bob quite hard to get to this point where we can actually bring the council together, give you some ideas about what we think. The vision of Bridgewater could be or should be, but ultimately it's a council decision whatever you want to go. And so part of what Bob has brought to you today, I think, will be eye opening and hopefully thought provoking. And so I'll actually turn it over to Bob and he can explain the rest of the is going to work. And I'll sit down and stay quiet.
They're actually a guest network and it doesn't have a password. It has a login screen you have to accept.
Want to make that banner go away?
Just work around it.
Yeah, you can if you select more. All the way over the way.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think the last time I was before you, I was four weeks into this position, so. It gave you March off and now we're 12 weeks in. And happy to have this opportunity to have this conversation with all of you. Before we get into it, I'd like to introduce Arnold Robinson and Chelsea Cactus from Fussin' O'Neil. Hi, Arnold Robinson.
Hi, Chelsea Cactus.
And Paul Edman and Erica Thornton from Union Studios. And Shane O'Brien and Nicole South of my office.
Hey, everybody.
So just as a little bit of background, as you all know, we are an MBTA community. With that comes some responsibilities. I'll describe those as urgency as well as opportunity. Tonight, our intention is to talk about two specific areas, Central Square and a proposed intermodal transportation hub area in the area of Campus Plaza. As you may or may not know, the MBTA community's legislation has specific requirements that have to be met. The first one was an information form which the town submitted in May of 2022. The second piece was an action plan that we submitted earlier this year, which has been approved. And then the third part is we have to adopt a zoning amendment no later than 1231 2024. And that has to create an overlay district with a half mile radius from wherever the MBTA station is going to be. We are hoping that we can have that zoning amendment adopted by 1231 and 23. So that we're a full year ahead of other communities that are part of the MBTA communities. The new Attorney General has come out and made clear that there are a few communities that have not submitted an action plan. That not participating in MBTA communities is not an option. She proceeds this to be an executive order from the vapor administration when it was enacted. So with that, people will get started and I will turn it over to Arnold.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. And thanks for taking time out of your schedules to be here for this. I know it's after hours. You're into your second jobs. A little bit of background, because she always be critical about who's talking to you about things. I'm a planner by training as it's Chelsea and we've been studios, my mind, one of the best architecture firms at building. Sort of contextual neighborhood filling transit transformative projects in New England communities. We work together on a lot of these kinds of projects in New England communities that are revitalizing and sort of filling gaps in empty street skates. Yes, to connect people from one place to another. So this is what we do. And Bob came to us and said, I'd really like you to help sort of help conceptualize some of the things that Bridgewater can take action on. So to get ready for tonight. We went through all your prior planning documents, looked at previous efforts, watched a lot of meetings on YouTube. And researched some of the best practices we knew about nationally. And then spent a lot of time talking with Bob and his staff. And then we're bringing to you a boiled down burden of what can be actions for Bridgewater. It's not such great work. So just a very quick sense of orientation. So we want to begin with with your strengths. You should never start with sort of what you perceive to be the things you have to get over, what can you build on? And so as we did our research, looked at your plans, looked at the walk around, spent our time here. One of the most amazing things you have is you have a very compact and walkable downtown, which has been part of your planning documents for decades in terms of connection and revitalization. A lot of communities don't. They have a more suburban layout where you cannot walk, you cannot like, you cannot connect. You have an incredible collection of historic buildings and neighborhoods. I highlighted some town owned buildings here, but around your core, you have these neighborhoods that are well connected with complete street skates and great housing. You've got Bridgewater State University, which is a huge strength to have. Many communities don't have institutions, what I call anchor institutes. That are there that brings in can bring enormous vitality to your community. And you are on an MBTA commuter line, which is a huge advantage and a huge strength. Is leveraged appropriately so that you are connected to a broader network. The other thing I think that's sort of hidden, it's not, it's not physical, is your demographics. And so you have various demographics. Lives here, what their purchasing power is. But the interesting thing is you're at a moment in Massachusetts and natural history. Where great demographic changes are going on that can work in your favor. Empty nesters are seeking to shed larger houses and go out to college. And that can cycle to younger families that are already here. And early stage professionals and I have two kids who are that age. You know, are really favoring low car or no car lifestyles. And so it's not quite the same. Their first they're for rental, their first acquisition is not necessarily going to be in a place where they want to have a car in the driveway. So that can work to your advantage as well. And they can't highlight this enough. You have done great planning already. You have in place your comprehensive master plan passed last year, which is very well done. Your downtown plan, even though it's from 2014, the bones of it are excellent in terms of actions for revitalization and for infrastructure. You've got a complete streets plan, which blinds you up for state funding. You have a prioritization plan. We have a housing production plan, which is pretty progressive and up to speed in terms of what it calls for for different market segments and action steps. You've got a partner who has an up to date institutional strategic master plan, which builds into itself community engagement and service and connection to the community. And you are in the MBTA communities program and you have an approved action plan as Bob just noted. So all of the bones are there. And I think one of the first things I want to say as a planner, we don't want you to do more planning. Time for implementation. You've got a great base already built. That's in place. One thing I do want to note, if you look at all those documents, literally the hundreds of pages that are in those. There are, there are a couple of key things that come up over and over and over again. Is revitalizing downtown is at the core of what you want to do. As part of that, though, it's not just making it pretty. It's it's making sure that you have an economically vibrant town. Where people have jobs, where there is economic generation happening in place. It's having housing for all the different segments of the community. And it's highlighting what we call complete streets, which is mean it's not just a throughway for cars. But there is, that works well too. Cars and trucks have to move back and forth, but there's increased roadway safety. There's safety for bicyclists. There's safety for pedestrians. So we call it universal safe. All the different users of road license plates. So that runs as a theme through every one of those plans. But we do need to highlight and confront directly, what are the challenges they have? That needs to be overcome. And as we look at it, as we read those documents and as we come in and walk the streetscape and talk to people who are stakeholders. Then one of the first things is a challenge to revitalizing downtown is a sense of disconnection between different destinations. You can look at a map. Different people have different opinions depending on what your daily routes are. But there's sometimes these gaps in sidewalks. There's these dangerous crossing points. There's lack of connection where bikes may be able to move back and forth or pedestrians move back and forth. A great example is where you know, Plymouth Plymouth Street and the railroad tracks come together across the university. At the university. The existing MBTA train station location is underutilized. It's current location, so for south. And you've got downtown properties that are underutilized, which all of that's downtown vibrant safe. MBTA station really a key issue.
Yep. So it is, Arnold said, it's underutilized and it also presents a problem for us meeting the requirements of the MBTA communities. Requirements, which are that we have to have 15% of our total housing inventory within that half mile radius of the MBTA station. So where it exists presently, we only get 377, where we need in actuality to get to 1,243. And that actually might be a little bit low because that was prior to the 2020 census. So we have initiated conversations with the university with respect to the need for us to have a discussion with the MBTA and the Commonwealth about relocating the station. They're amenable to having that conversation. More than likely, it would go somewhere in the Spring Street lot. They would get some parking back at their end. So that conversation is starting. We're not having a conversation about relocating the train platform without including the university in that dialogue.
You know, just make sure I understood that that requirement. So 15% of Bridgewater's total housing needs to be within the half mile.
Correct.
When the train station.
Correct. So what happens, you know, I just want to say, sorry, Arnold. Well, what happens where it is now, we lose that whole south side of the train station because it's all wetlands. We lose the hill because that's the university. And then we lose everything to the west. So that's university.
And we'll show you some more detailed map on that. So this is a good example. If this is if station was to be relocated further to the north, closer to that intersection with Broad, you can to orient yourself, you can see Campus Plaza up to the top of the slide. The foundry site that's been in discussion, that's on the left hand side. And as we move down to the bottom of the slide and moving toward Central Square, you can see about the auto parts store in Walgreens down the lower right quadrant. We highlight those because those are what we call underutilized properties where in many other places in Massachusetts, they've done transit oriented development and developed more intense built, you know, mixed use on the first floor. Residential above walking distance to the station. So there's an opportunity to be there to meet some of those numbers for MBTA.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, Bill Wood, Techus. So I've been talking about movements train for almost 10 years. I think it makes perfect sense to move back to the center. But in conjunction with the plan that needs to be in place either next year for zoning or the year after. And we say, well, that would be an op, that that's a possibility. And we have probability that the train station may move. But the actuality is that they're not going to move the train station for another five plus years because of construction. There's a dual line there, property ownership, et cetera. So can those things fit together? As you're about to present this with the probability that the train station may move?
Yeah, I think, you know, as part of the action plan and the requirements from the state aren't that the station is moved by December 2024 is that we have the zoning amendments and the framework in place to do the type of development that we want to do.
I guess, Bob, is that acceptable to the state if we say it died is where, you know, the train station would be, but it's not there today. So that's going to be our plan going forward and that's.
Certainly, I mean, it's a concern. I mean, you know, our expectation and hope is that we are trying to initiate a conversation with the governor's office, the governor's office, MBTA, all of the moving pieces that are necessary to make, to effectuate that change. Get to Central Square. I mean, we've put in a grant request through HUD for technical assistance to coordinate all those stakeholders to have that conversation. My thought is, Bill, if it looks as if everyone is rolling in the same direction, that station will eventually.
Okay, no, sorry.
That, you know, will be.
That's fine, Shay. Thanks.
So we want, we realize our time with you is brief tonight. So one of the things we wanted to set up that background of what we saw as strengths and challenges. But we want to focus most of our time on laying on the table, things that are sort of flagging rods that are the actions. So we've talked about that theme, accelerating from plan to action. And what do those things work like? And related to discussions, it's very much your reactions to what we put up next, those ideas of things that we see as top priorities that you can take action on to move towards those goals you put in your plans. So Bob's going to start with downtown.
Can I ask you a question? Is this available to us data? The other question is, should we perhaps move on the things that are in the video?
What a happy audience. So.
So I've actually shared this slide with you previously. This is actually taken from the adopted master plan, identifying some of the things that we're talking about tonight. As I said previously, in my life, everything is near term. We go to the next slide. So these are all the things that we we are working on. We're developing a strategy for Central Square. Old County Planning is looking at traffic flow. We are going to be discussing parking management, wayfinding, looking at parking and how it gets managed. My standpoint, I mean, one of the greatest assets we have, the town has is revitalization of Old Town Hall to be a catalyst. Or reinvestments in the central square area. If there are efforts ongoing right now to make that a reality. There's going to be a fair amount of fundraising and financing and funding that has to happen to to make that a reality. But the steps are already in progress for that to begin.
So I want to talk a little bit about your downtown revitalization and what can you have as potential action for you, who you have for allies and where are the funding sources? So, you know, this is something that many downtowns, older historic downtowns in the United States have been doing for decades. Really getting the work done. And so, you know, just put some basics out there that this methodology is time tested, it's proven, there's a lot of support for it. You harness the folks who are there. And you have storefront rehab, so you see physical change with with change in everybody's hearts and minds. There's got to be some kind of organization that is your advocacy organization outside of the town usually. Pedestrian connections, pedestrian connections in the downtown can't be just acceptable. They have to. They have to feel like the best place in the world along here. Your shoetake improvements do that. You place making with public art with different improvements that you do, recruiting new businesses, marketing and branding, critical to making this destination both locally but also regional. And those transportation things that Bob talked about. You've got great partners out there who are ready now to engage with you. Massachusetts has a whole pretty well funded downtown initiative. I talked to one of their staff members this week. And they said they're not getting enough grant applications. So go for money. But Main Street America, been around 40 years, started off with a national trust, proven sort of methodology to do. So you've got a lot of actions that can support that, but implementation for you with the plans you've got is ready to go. You just need to kick off.
Sorry, what did she say? And she spoke to about.
Anytime, Director of Massachusetts Downtown Initiative.
Okay.
And so in their last round for technical assistance grants, they didn't get enough grants. Totally give up their own. So downtown logic funding.
Yep. So it's not because we haven't asked. So since I've been here, we have received a grant for $20,000 to initiate the zoning amendments through the Mass Housing Partnership. Horsey Witten is a national firm that will be coming in to help us with that. We've been notified by through the Housing Choice Grant Program that we're eligible for between 100 and $300,000. They'll pick up that second piece of analyzing the zoning amendment in the Form Based Code. That has been approved. We submitted a congressional direct spending request, you know, as a earmark for $2 million to Senator Markey's office for renovations to the Old Town Hall. That request has been now picked up by Senator Warren's office and will be sponsored in the House by Congressman Keating's office. And the Complete Streets Program, we had received $400,000 for that. That had expired. He hadn't done the work, but I was able to get that reinstated and we have extension now to get that work done by December of 2024.
So I wanted to share three examples of similar communities in size and the layout. That is really amazing to take the best Greenville, Mass, which is doing some amazing downtown developments. Very interesting quarter going through with high volumes of traffic. It's doing a league streets design right now and they're going to go into construction in two years. But they're also doing some anchor building development. They identified two anchor buildings and have worked with mass development to fund those projects. Hudson, Mass has some really interesting driven a lot by transportation. They put a rotary in the center, not saying you should do that. But it's an interesting approach for place making because it's created this sort of living room for the town, the space where folks get together. But they also have a very good marketing branding and advocacy. We can't business recruitment and retention as well. And Bitifor Maine was last year's winner for the national award for sort of small and medium towns. And the heart of Bitifor organization, fantastic website. And they are supported by their state. Program, but that's the really helps ramp you up. But events and and advocacy are really key for them in their successful effort. The other key has been housing redevelopment. They have been developing mills, but also new buildings surrounding downtown. And that has went to more consumers for the shops, more patients for the restaurants. So that's been really key.
So previously I talked about, you know, we need a zoning amendment. I've talked about Form Based Code and I've shared this slide with you before. A Form Based Code is an alternative in any district. That allows for the regulation of development, helps community realize its vision for a specific area. I'm not going to read every bullet point. But, you know, again, what it is, is that it's an expedited and predictable development pattern. So the community has input in terms of what goes into the Form Based Code. What type of buildings do you want? What type of height of buildings? What type of materials? What type of street trees? You look to try to incorporate renewable energy and efficiency in these buildings. Developers like this because when they come in and they see what the application is for, but it's more base code. If they check all of the boxes, they know that it's going to be an expedited approval process. They're not going to have to go back and forth between a planning board and a zoning board and a town council. If a developer wanted to come in and do something different, they certainly have the ability to do that. But we think that in the areas where I've done it previously and where it's worked, it's a very proven and effective tool for redevelopment. So in terms of looking at getting a zone amendment, which would include the Form Based Code to implementation. And we're starting that tonight with this workshop. Next week, we have Horsey Witten committed to start the scoping for the Form Based Code. And we'll begin to do our public engagement, taking this presentation out to the residents and the business owners to get their feedback and make them aware of what it is that the direction that we're going, assuming that he was a council or supporting. Through the June, July, August, through the summer, we will develop the zoning amendment in the Form Based Code. Come back to you with what the results of that are in September, looking to initiate the approval and adoption process in October, which would lead us to December of this year for approval. Is that ambitious? Yes. Is it doable? Yes. But again, keeping in mind that we're up against a hard stop date of December of 2024. We think with respect to some of the development opportunities that we'll talk about a little later. Having these things in place are going to put us ahead of other communities that are looking to do some of the things.
Bob, where does the planning board come into that?
Well, they'll have to, I mean, after we do the work, Bob, with you, then we'll be taking that to the planning board or. And then as well as the zoning board, I mean, the planning board will be. And I've done, you know, presentations similar to what I did for you all in February as well as on Form Based Code with the planning board. So we're trying to keep them, you know, in the loop as we start to develop these concepts. That's the amendment for the zoning amendment for transit, I mean, for MBTA communities that have to be adopted. So in transit oriented development is a concept where, again, I borrowed this from the the master plan. I just gave it a different title because all the things that you say in your support with the transit oriented development is, it basically is creating mixed use development close to where you have public transportation, whether that be bus or light rail or boat train. We think there's opportunities. We've been having conversations with Matt to improve bus service to to Bridgewater. Again, looking at areas where we think this can be developed, it's really in that area of Central Square, the Spring Street lot. Next slide, please. Again, I'm not going to read this for data. I've shared this with you previously, but when we look at all the necessary components for developing good transit oriented development. The areas that we're talking about set up really nicely, that half mile radius. I don't think people realize that, you know, to walk from Central Square to Campus Plaza, since it's within that half mile radius, it's less than a five minute walk. Right now, the perception is that I'm not going to do that walk because there's no connection really between. So our thought is, is that, you know, revitalizing and reinvigorating Central Square is good. It will attract locally owned businesses, small businesses, maybe improve on the tenant mix we have now. Where some of the development, the mixed use development, we might see at the other end of that corridor would be a little bit higher end or more national. And that could be able to afford some of those higher rents would be. But in any event, people would see that this is a very walkable community. So they either walk down to where the train is or from where the train is. And also the campus taxi BSU is within that half mile as well. So I, I said this before, I really think that we're in a position as a community to be a model for what transit oriented development should be in a suburban setting. And there's other communities that are that are doing that. Canton has been doing it. Mansfield is aggressive on it. Attleboro is doing it. Beverly. You got, you got, and that is a good example where they've adopted new zoning bylaws. They created an overlay district that they identify as their center economic opportunity district. They've done streetscape improvements and they've got public works, economic development grants to help with some of those improvements. Now sharing, give it to Paul.
Sure. Thanks, everyone. Pleasure to be here. I'm a principal at Union Studio Architecture and Design. And as Arnold said, we're really focused on this sort of work and developing close knit, walkable communities and change and inspire and bring good to every community, whether it's mixed use development, housing or institutional work. And we have a branch of planning within our office, which Erica is a part of. She'll speak a little bit after me. So as Bob and Arnold had laid out for you, there's a lot of tools in place and more tools to be utilized, implemented with a zoning amendment on those codes that could really bring some opportunity to some the MBTA station if it's moved toward the the Spring Street lot. And there's a, we just took a look at some five parcels that are within that quarter mile blocking distance. To talk about what those opportunities might be, they're all underutilized, some are vacant, completely underutilized. Campus Plaza might be underutilized with these other mechanisms in place that could be perceived as a much different and more dense and vibrant community and neighborhood that could really support that MBTA platform station. The ones that we identified was Campus Plaza across the street of Broad Street, the foundry site up the way on Broad Street toward Plaza Commons is former Renley's. Up the way on Broad Street toward, uh, Plaza Commons is former Friendly's, Sunday Bay inside, and it's a two-some parcels. Then along the Riddle of Tracks, there's a technical cyclone on Hail Street, and on one oh six Hail Street, which is a empty lot. That is the Sunday Bay. I'll start with talking a little bit about the former Friendly's. And that is a really interesting site because it has a real presence along the street end. That is a common, very foreign arterial in and out of town, close proximity to the Red Dog, which is the uh, and proposed M B T A station. And it really provides an opportunity to make that walkability of that walkstres, as I'm saying, much more pleasant and and provides often for housing as well as commercial opportunity. This here is an example of a project that we completed fifteen years ago with a vertical underground floor and residents above. It's close to a busy street, it's like Broad Street and, but it's very, it holds its front and makes it, there's a little plaza behind the two buildings, so it's very, uh, traditional but contemporary in its use. And, uh, it's a great presence on the street and that, that sort of connectivity up and down on Broad Street is needed in in other lots as well, so you have a connectivity and cohesion from one place to another. And similarly on Hail Street, this is a vacant site that you know, it's, it's on a little bit towards B S U and that this opportunity could be housing, there's a net. Uh, next slide shows a proposed development that we were just programmed on a few months ago in East Providence, Riverside Neighborhood. This is Bollocks Point Avenue, again, a very busy street. That was vacant lot and this is all portable housing, sixteen units with a mix of flats on either end. And the center corridor which is over is for townhouses. So there's a way to, an opportunity to provide different housing to families for single, two, or a small. Uh, I didn't find out that behind the whole parking lot in those trees is an in-state bike path. That goes from Broad and all the way down to Crystal River Island, twenty miles. And there's a lot of people that commute to use that bike, myself included. A bike once we passed here and into Providence and the little, uh, pretty building up from our upper left end corner is New Former Pram Station. And that there is now the successful coffee shops. And that already that there's been a lot of revitalization, this little excess of East Providence. And we had a groundbreaking ceremony yesterday and people are very excited about it. Uh, this, this site, even though it has some existing buildings on it, it could be, some of those could be salvaged and utilized for some commercial or artistic institution. Studios or mixed use living, uh, there's, some of them might have to come down to make opportunity for new structures and uses. Uh, this could be similar vision by another project we're working on also in East Providence. Next slide, uh, in right on Tottenham Avenue, across the street from the Cinnell Hall. And the proposed point of growing, it's live work arrangement where a property owner that is a townhouse style, on the ground floor has a small commercial space that can be used for offices or a studio as a commercial activity to a very, uh, busy main street, but they live upstairs. And then behind it, the, the site continues with, uh, three, three floors, uh, three level townhouses.
I think with all of these, what we're trying to show is to respect the scale of what existing housing and what is in those existing neighborhoods, but at the same time, we energize some of those areas as well.
I think one thing that's also important to make sure to put on the record since this is being recorded and broadcast is, is that these are examples of developments that have been done in other places, none of this is saying that this should happen around on these sites to give an example of what could be, should an owner decide to make a change.
And I should point out that's a vacant side of the garden, so these are similar sites, similar in scale. And I think you're suggesting some similar opportunities. Uh, next is the boundary site, which is a much larger site, diverse in terms of the structures and the opportunity there. And it's bounded by the town river, so there's a real actually recreational opportunity. I was thinking about it today, but I'll do that this, to connect back to the, I'm going to campus plaza and So this lot has a, uh, next slide, these are just some examples of housing that could be a sort of another community of compounds of mixed, mixed income. Housing as well as some commercial and economic bill, uh, opportunities and scale would, uh, scattered in within the network of, of street network. Uh, then you will see, sort of, taking a stab at proposing something first. A very, very preliminary vision for and conceptual vision of Campus Plaza, that's true. Which I think is next, and Erica will
Yeah, so Bob, let's just take a look at Campus Plaza, it sounds like the owners, we want to talk on that a little bit.
Yeah, so Campus Plaza is owned by Federal Realty, which is a national real estate investment trust. We've taken a little bit more liberty in terms of what we've done in terms of concept and schematic here because we're actually in conversation with Federal Realty in terms of what could happen here. When I first started to speak with them, they were positioning the property for sale. That still might happen, but now that they know that the town is considering some zoning changes and some additional density and they have green interest, um, in having conversations, so later this week we'll be speaking with them again, but again, because we're having conversation with them, we felt we had a little bit more liberty to expand on the concept of what could happen.
And so this is just, uh, you know, an aerial existence, I can see it's pretty typical of anything plaza development, right, all the parking, you see the parking up front with your, um, businesses behind. So we wanted to, you know, again, it's just a concept bridge, so an idea for what could potentially happen here. And like Paul mentioned, we really try to do this and we try to look at what's interesting in your neighborhood and your town right now. And so tried to provide, um, mixed use neighborhood that really feels like it could be an extension of your town, lots of mixed housing types, um, mixed, uh, uses that are in the building, so we believe it's mixed use and the orange, that could have something like retail or offices below possibly. Uh, probably retail activates the street a little bit more. Um, and then we have multi-family dark yellow and single family, sort of attached townhouse style housing in yellow. And so just for an example of numbers and, you know, potential development, we've shown instead two hundred and eighty sixteen minutes. Um, and about seventy-five thousand square foot of commercial retail. And existing right now is about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so it's, you know, it's actually coming down a lot because you're mixing um, things like that, and you could have dedicated office spaces, really drawing some potential businesses from the future time to the university and cybersecurity would be um, a big thing at the university and you could have, still have a dedicated grocery store, potentially small and more visual, you know, village scale, maybe some Trader Joe's scales or And so, just do a little bit. And so again, you know that the park is in the back there, so we really wanted to show that we're connecting to the styles of our conservation area and really taking advantage of the point that we have. Um, so you've got your corns that are there, but then the housing and stuff is kind of going along there. And we're really looking at this as having, the buildings are lining the street, where the street's becoming your access for all the pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles or any other motorized types of, uh, vehicles that people might be using. Um, creating, using those buildings to create the spaces, like their common green and their pocket parks, that can bring people you know, nice spaces for people to, to be in, to be And then here we're showing down in the south there, or it's not, it's not south, but in the, the lower part of the, um, the image along Spring Street is right up potential transition of these, we really wanted to bring in this, we had this cross access right here coming from that potential strange train station off the existing entry when ninety-nine was started. And then coming in, new entry on Broad Street, right into the center, you know, it was like the heart of the development, the big, large common green. Which could actually be an asset, not just for this neighborhood, but for the entire town, with the farmer's markets there, that there. Um, all surrounded by, you know, village, you know, shopping or things like that, you could have ice cream shops in that age where people go up to take a hike down the trail. And then we have just done a massing, just to show just really, um, rough massing, that showed the different heights and the various sizes that you can have. You know, two to three story, um, buildings along Broad Street. And some of those walk-up multi-families, very similar in scale to what's there already on Spring Street, right just south of that. And, you know, up to three, maybe four stories. Um, but just things that can be scaled to the village, you know, when those are large, you can, you know, accommodate that in your zoning and your formate code and you're looking at that. Make sure the architecture reads that it's small scale, which will show some examples of the file. You know, you can take this and use this as a case study for looking at what it is you want to accomplish, um, in, in these names and in this period. So here's just some examples that we were looking at, so again, that's the image of, left that Paul showed earlier, this also is, you know, conceivably have buildings that are of that nature, we have smaller retail shops on the bottom with, um, residents above different types of plaza spaces, hardscapes and softscapes and the large open green areas. Um, in the middle, down in the middle area, we have, these are larger buildings in historic towns, right? But they're scaled to feel walkable and feel pleasant to be in. Um, and then on the left too, you can have these really interesting spaces where there would be a alleyways like that, and things like that, so no good buildings. You know, might be a little bit closer together, they can have different heights to both scales and all feel like they weren't really loved together. Um, so we just wanted to go over some
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of things before we go into best practices, so I'm just looking at Campus Plaza today, it generates, it's under two hundred and forty thousand dollars in property taxes to this town. If we were to build this out to something less than even what we see here. You know, we'd easily be generating over a million dollars in, in property taxes on an annual basis. I think the other point I think that needs to be made is for all of these, you know, ideas that we showed in these different parcels. But that's assuming that's all done on Form-Based Code, that, you know, those are the styles, that's the architectural that we want. That the developer knows that, you know, there's a higher and better use than what that property is being used from now. But I think really the unique opportunity for, for Bridgewater right now is, is that by increasing the density that can exist in any of these parcels, we're creating value for that property owner. Uh, which is a unique situation that the town is initiating this. But for that, uh, it is not uncommon for the town to look for even mitigation or contributions back to whatever infrastructure improvements we need to make that. But that developer would contribute towards that, so it's not costing taxpayers anything extra. Um, that is a very big part of this, um, and I think that's, you know, just a great opportunity for us. Federal Realty is used to these types of projects, this, this is if you look at their portfolio, these are the types of projects they do. But there are other developers out there, uh, that, that do these types of things. A couple of other points is that concentrating this kind of development in this area, we already have existing infrastructure in place, we have water in store. Uh, we've initiated, you know, we think that there's a conversation to be had with B S U and the Department of Collection that their wastewater should be created out of Chris, because that plant has under capacity. That frees up opportunities for us at our wastewater treatment. But it also takes development pressure off other parts of the town that don't have infrastructure or that the town wants to clear with open space, regenerative space. As we're concentrating on that development here, so I mean, I think that is, all of those things combined, I think are what make this very exciting to be a model for smart, sustainable development. Um, that's complementary to the university, complementary to existing businesses, to residents. The one thing I hear quite often in the time that I've been here is there's nothing downtown for people, people go out of town to spend their money, there's no restaurants downtown. Um, so this, you know, you need a little bit of density to create that vibrancy and to create that, that mix. We don't really have in town that housing product for those young professionals that want to live. Uh, they're not going to live in a house with a bunch of college students and they probably can't afford a single family house outside of town. Uh, our conversations with the university is that they're hungry for housing for high jump professors, young professors, and faculty and staff that want to live in town. So we think there's an opportunity to create that product for them here.
Quick question, Bob, so do we need, um, this type of development to get to that fifteen percent number for the
Yeah, plus the other developments that we're looking at, we have a lot of more density that we pick up and from the Spring Street lot as an example than what we would be, we really only get half of the circle.
So I, I had an interesting question today, like you said. The town managers talked a number of times because of the new water premium plan, that we have a well cap of one point eight million gallons per day or something like that, I think it's pretty close. Um, has anybody done any calculations on how many housing units that is for the town in total? And what, what extra capacity room we have to continue to expand? You know, a couple hundred units here, a couple hundred units there, like.
We haven't looked at water capacity, we have looked at wastewater capacity. And we know that if we're able to redirect the university's wastewater, that we're fine in meeting what our discharge permit requirements are. Um, but fair question, I mean, it is something that we need to look at, but at the same time, you know, if there's a need to identify tubular wells or alternative water sources. Again, that's one of the things that you might go back to the developers, saying we need a contribution towards that. But not to be ignored for sure, because it's infrastructure capacity is one of the first questions that every developer at this scale is going to ask, it's one of the questions I asked before. I even took the position because if it's not there to support the project, then it's not going to happen.
Bob, question, um, with the exception of that project, seems to me to campus project projects, yes. We have all you're in conversations with that, that seems to be probably the largest undertaking of all of the projects in that area. Because you do have, and I don't know where we are, I know that the Broad Street project, although this presentation just outlines to be Friendly's area. But there has been an approved project for Broad Street. And there was zoning change recently for the Perkins Foundry project, and they're moving forward, if you have projects, those projects are in work, I don't know how far they are, whether they're a back to the table or what. And then you, why if a village would be considered part of that half mile radius, I assume, okay. So you know, we're out with those two projects and, you know, I think that's good, the, the university owns the Hail Street property, we don't own that, we don't own any of these properties.
Correct.
So with that, that's, that's the, and, and the other thing as well, I'm on a roll here, and I just want to ask this final question. Is the comment itself, and there's been a lot of talk, it wasn't answered tonight, about the traffic flow in the comment, whether we're going to do something with that, I don't to me, you know, the, the more times I drive through there, the more times I think it's time to look at something. I don't know what, but, um, I think it's time to look at that. And the catalyst, as the gentleman said earlier, that, you know, that the Old Town Hall might be a catalyst. But also remember the town, uh, fire station will be closed in a couple of years. And that, that and the town hall could generate a lot of interest down there, so I guess my question is where are we with recommending any changes to traffic flow downtown here? Or could be, or could that be part of mitigation we see from, from these developers? Um, and we're, we're out with the Broad Street, is that a dead issue? And the Perkins Foundry, a lot of changes.
So with respect to, uh, let's go with traffic first. Uh, Old Colony Plan Commission has been doing a Route eighteen corridor study from East Bridgewater to the Rotary. Uh, they have met with them, they have a specific focus on what happens in the Central Square area. Uh, they've got a public survey out now, uh, we anticipate they're going to be coming forward with their recommendations by September. Um, so they have looked at a number of different scenarios, uh, they've done a lot of modeling. And we think that the recommendations that they come forward with are going to help, uh, improve the pedestrian safety as well as bicycle safety and increase economic development opportunities potentially. And also, uh, potentially change what the parking pattern is. Uh, with respect to the Pascal property, that's the Friendly's as well, which, uh, that was approved. Uh, that approval will expire next month. Uh, I've met with Mr. Pascal several times. Uh I've met with Mr. Pascal several times, encouraging him to have his architect have a conversation with us. Explaining to him what our intention is with formate code. Uh that potentially equil get more density there than he previously had saw. Uh same thing with with the Foundry site. Uh we met with them early on. I appreciate the fact that what they designed was what was current zoning at the time. Uh but you know, we strongly believe that um with form-based code, they could get much more density and a better product for the town than uh what they're proposing. Uh there's not a lot of architectural significance or detail on what they're proposing. Uh you know, they're suggesting they're going to put up a building that has vinyl siding, but know that that's exactly the direction that we want to go. But um you know, I think the planning board has expressed uh a real desire for them to take pause and pay attention to what was being discussed in town and working in partnership with us. But as you said, we don't own any of these forces. But you know, I think that whether Pascal property gets sold to someone else, but a property owner, a new buyer understanding where the town is going, I think there is value. I think just by what we've done with Campus Plaza, we've increased the value of that property for federal. Uh we learned through federal earlier this week that the post office property is potentially for sale too. So you know, being able to fold that into the mix, you know, to base other opportunities as well.
Thank you. If you will, if you talk to the owner of that site, it's a word because I don't think that's.
That's fine.
It is.
Yeah.
And I wanted to bring up a point. Yes, that's um best example, further example of those. Well, yeah, sure. Um granted, no, no one's going to quote you all on this, but in your experience.
Really important.
I don't think that. We'll hold you to it. How about that? Um for a development like this, how much would you see funded though? Percentage wise, if you know, range.
Well, I think that there's no public money in this at all. Because again, you know, you're you're giving density, doesn't exist. So I mean, I I I don't see any of these requiring any kind of public subsidy. We might, you know, through the MBTA communities, get some funds to improve some of the structure. But I think it's the other way around. It's the development community helping us with our infrastructure. You know, that could be water, sewer, it could be parks.
So okay, let's hold, let's hold accountable to that.
So Bob, now we're going to be moving our main fire department closer to twenty four.
Right.
Now we're going to be increasing density. You know, at at the plaza, are we going to run into an issue now with public safety? Not staff well enough at Pratt Town to be able to adequately service the density increase where we're spreading out farther now. Where before we have, you know, our main firehouse downtown and Pratt Town up the street. We're going to run into a problem now with that.
Yeah, I mean, and I think in that same vein is that, you know, as we look at what response time and what the requirements are. Is that a public contribution that a developer needs to make to either expand that Pratt Town station or provide additional piece of equipment? Um you know, those are all conversations to how. But valid point, absolutely.
Maybe we just clarify a potential order. So earlier you gave us some examples of success. My town in Western Des. Do you just describe a little bit about what success is? Is success, does the buildings look better? Or is success, like just it sort of helped me envision, let's ask for this is done. What is the experience?
The next slide. I mean, you know, potentially still you have a central corridor through Campus Plaza that looks like this. Let's match the comments.
Yeah, I was going to say that you mentioned comments like Campus Plaza, right? When they started and they've been really good at phasing their melt. And now they've done the core, I mean, just retail. This now they're adding these two residential and just residential outside of it. They have been based and they're phasing over.
You know, and modifying it too along the way, depending on economic pressures, market trends and different opportunities. And I think you mentioned comments as a library and a fire station. And so that got all sort of built in over time as the as the place grew. So it wasn't just built out with at at risk, it was really well calculated and had the mechanisms placed. Formed its code, the best practices that wanted to highlight here because is safe streets, two-way traffic, parking on either side to slow down traffic, identified crosswalks. Yeah. For areas for tree plantings and streetscape to make the pedestrian round of the sidewalk safer and more pleasant. So people arrive there, will spend more time there. In and out, we sometimes they pick up, we are, but that they can stroll and do their daily things. And all the visitors that come for a reason. So they're going to Easton for dinner, I have to come here and enjoy what Bridgewater has to offer. Spike held off using my favorite phrase of creating a there there. That's what we need to do is create a there there.
Well, I think that's the comparison that is very good because that was a drive to town. Or that that stretch was a driving stretch, or this was an destination. And I think that's what people often describe as Bridgewater, so the time you drive through the outside. And so this is exciting to me to be this. Uh because it does create a big sign. You mentioned it, the other thing maybe I could just stick your attention. So you said this also generates significant tax revenue. Um it clearly a good appearance and I would imagine makes the buildings around this more valuable so they start to air it too. So it's contagious. But it's very central. Yeah, um it attracts national chain retail in this area. But it allows for space from all parts of course to come in. Uh it's a great gateway to the new park system. Uh it meets the MBTA guidelines, it creates new gathering spaces, stress system. Um and then I think with the inclusion of the town hall, it also helps us like build the culture. Right, is that? Right, I missed.
Yeah, I was just going to add to, like this, you know. From buildings, building products, they're very, very well phased this over. Something that's somewhere away. You can build that vacant lot right on the corner without spaulding. The block, and maybe fill in a long part of the, you can start to see these things happen. You know, we're waiting to design this, it's put those around the buildings that you can start to develop it out. Moving businesses to other buildings. Um and then I think our last example was just, it was a Southfield comments and we threw it. It's a good example of showing how the buildings are getting a little taller. They're that really nice pitch for just that has squares that I don't feel like fully four, three, four story buildings. Has a nice character that goes to a really central grounds. Um it's based on a lot of people that are for content.
Nice, another question. So I could imagine a little bit of a race, you know, first town within your hearing. This, so that the next town over when they create the same thing. They like we wouldn't ever get out again. Um I just be curious to, in what you know about the towns around us. Is there something about our location that's going to be first of market that involves some of the people that are.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, Middleborough has not submitted an action plan for um MBTA communities. So the, that's a good advantage. I think when you look at the demographics of of Bridgewater in comparison to Eastclass, Halifax were much stronger. Um you know, when you draw that out, a mile, three miles, five miles, they're very strong. Um which is a advantage, certainly something that a higher end retail or restaurant would look at. Um we just don't have the product for that right now. And so, I mean, I think, you know, again, Rockton has its own challenges. They don't want to be Rockton. I mean, I think that, you know, because of COVID, we saw a change in terms of people that moved here because they like schools or they like, you know, they wanted to be out of the city. But again, we're losing some of that income. It's going on someplace else being spent because we don't have it here. So um that is, that's a challenge. But you know, I think one of the things we want to do is get out to the community and say, okay, would you support these types of things if we had, you know, I think there's not as much community engagement as we would like because and those people that are on boards, commissions are loyal, but I think there's a big part of the population that we're missing. Um and you know, so we're either working through schools or actually going to where they are, to the Lundy games, to the soccer games. Um through BTVs, getting the message out that we need their input and we want them to be aware of what it is that we're doing. But I I think we're, that's the urgency to get this done this year and not wait till next year. So that we can start to be a model. I think that when we look at what the governor and town governor's agenda is, we're checking a lot of those boxes, you know. Been unsuccessful communicating with them to get them here to support what we're doing. I think that will come, but you know, I think that we have, I'm going to say it again, there's a unique opportunity that exists here. Um and hopefully a council that supports that initiative as well. I mean, that's a big part of it. So we miss, you know, clearly without the support of the council and leadership in town. But
And it doesn't seem like it's a temporary.
But I think it's closing, yes.
We need to move quickly.
And there's still infrastructure, but the federal level structure money out there. And there is, that will all dry up at some point, but you know, even the challenges for supply chain and what's happening in the marketplace. Again, when you look at the median income in this town, pretty hard to ignore your region, but.
So why does seems to be still pinned on moving train stations? So what can we do as a town to help that that motion?
So I mean, it's a conversation that we are having with anybody and everybody uh that's an elected term of the need to do this, but also uh MBTA communities was a state driven initiative. If you want us to do MBTA communities and do it the way that you asked us to do it, it's paramount that that platform be relocated. I think getting the uh university to acknowledge that there's a benefit to have that relocated was an important first step. Um now it's, you know, elevating that conversation at the state level. Um not necessarily directly to MBTA, but maybe through the executive branch down to MBTA. Um but if we are going to fulfill what the requirements are, it's the only way we're going to be able to do it. But again, then it checks the box for creating mixed income housing. It creates opportunities for deceased transportation improved. It increases opportunities to have reinvestment in the central square area and start to, you know, do some really not a plain term, but cool things.
I also have communities that are considering improving MBTA. The thing that you can do is, obviously, you got to have a unit by front. That's that's incredible piece. Uh the other thing you can do to accelerate it is to um make sure you're operationally peaceful with every location that that work with consultants to figure that out. And begin to understand scale of cost of what if you, MBTA was to build a new platform, it was going to change this location. There's plenty of platform insertion going on in the Commonwealth right now. So you've got some comparative numbers you can look at. Because that's going to be one of the first questions to face. What's the cost going to be? And if you are an educated community that knows what it's asking for, you're going to get more respect. I think the benefit we certainly have is the part of it because it's a swap from school prom, school parking and with MBTA. Now, what you didn't pick up on is the lot on the other side from Crispy's is MBTA owned. And that doesn't fall under the foundry ownership. Did you have any thoughts about that particular lot?
We haven't and don't know that we knew that. So I mean, we certainly can take a look at it. I don't think it's utilized very much, but yeah, that's, I mean.
Well, it's used extensively for Crispy's and they do, they do improvements on the lot at their expense because it's a means to them, but at any moment MBTA could change it.
Yeah. And then the last piece is, you know, when you've talked about it, you know, we refer to it as coming down collaboration with the university. Um it was one of the next like, it was one of the attractive aspects when I took this position was the opportunity to work in a university town. Um I think in the period that, you know, I know that there was cooperation and collaborative efforts prior to, but uh we've had a number of conversations with different uh groups from the university who are working uh with the university on improving our GIS. They're going to help with some of the community engagements, having a meeting with the leadership with respect to uh the relocation of the the train platform. We have another meeting schedules for just different ways that we can collaborate. Um you know, bike and pedestrian infrastructure is important to them. Um they, you know, we, I think we all acknowledge that we don't see a lot of university students in the downtown. Um the perception from the university to the students is that it's not safe from a pedestrian standpoint, but we've got to overcome that. Um I think some of that will happen as a result of what the traffic order study would be. But you know, it's filling in, again, it's a perception. Uh it's not a reality. So you know, college students, they should know how to cross the street.
Okay. I'm not a small guy. I'm afraid to cross.
It doesn't exist now. As it exists now, absolutely. Your head has to be on a school. No question about it, but you know, I think if if we can slow traffic down, it will flow just as good, if not better. Then you know, having people have a knee jerk stop and then being a pedestrian in the middle. Uh but no, no question right now, it is, it's a sport to get across. Some questions, so am I perceiving it properly that the university is on board above the training station? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, there's an acknowledgement, I mean, that their concern is they don't want to lose any parks. So net, net, they are the same on parking or even potentially gain some. Um then I think, you know, that's certainly they understand the benefit and we've talked about it, uh you know, in the future. Uh when the fire station is built, um demolishing the existing fire station, could you do some type of structure park there as part of the existing park and lot that we have? You know, have retail on the ground floor that, um that some of that parking could benefit the university as well. So I think their concern is, is if parking is net, net, that they're good.
But getting back to Bill's point, and you might have answered the question earlier. Um moving the train, I'm I'm all on board with that. Is the state going to sort of uh agree to do that um before some of this development or that they're going to want to see some development? See some commitment from some of these private developers before they decide to, what's going to, who's going to have to blink first, I guess?
I don't think anyone has to blink. I mean, I think that, you know, I I use the word holistically a lot. And I mean, I think, you know, if they see that the community is moving in the direction to make the zoning amendments, adopt form-based code. They know that the development community is engaging in conversations. Um and and again, the cost to relocate a platform might fall on the development community. Because they're going to benefit. Um but I think they have to be engaged in the conversation. I think that we can be on on, you know, parallel tracks having this conversation. Yeah, I, you know, another part of it, I think you have to look at is what's the ridership now for where it is? It's it's not heavy.
Well, that's the other thing too, is, you know, commercial office spaces fifty percent capacity in Boston. I mean, that's an issue. Is that going to change?
Oh, I, I mean, I think the the opportunity for Bridgewater again is, is that having the cyber program opening here is going to bring potential business here. I mean, just this past week, Rhode Island jumped on the cyber train. You know, they're going to be years behind us. They're going to do something over at Island College. But I think there's a huge opportunity, you know, both for the university as well as businesses and young professionals that want to be in that. I mean, that industry is not going away. It's going to expand exponentially. And you know, that's the type of businesses that I think is wanting to bring uh here that if we're not talking about a thousand employees, you might be talking about fifty. So that can support this kind of space.
I I like what I see. I like the presentation. I appreciate all the effort you have made in a short period of time. But like the gentleman said in the beginning, it's time to implement. We've studied everything to death.
So Bob, if I could ask, right, so your view, I think what I gathered from your earlier thoughts. First two action items from the council's perspective uh would be with respect to MBTA communities and the zoning note. Men. Yeah, I I think at a high level is, yes, continue doing what you're doing. C D. And yes, I mean, then, you know, as we I mean, certainly we want to take this out to the community with an acknowledgement that council is supportive of the direction that we're going. Um with that, I think, you know, silently. Um, with that, I think, you know, silently, then we would be coming back to you with uh, the zoning amendments and the form base code and, but including you as we do that, go through that process or at least making you aware of what that process is. And having your input as well, but I think it's important that your constituents tell a friend who tell a friend who tell a friend that, um, you know, it's the more community buy-in we have, I mean, that will help with these conversations with MBTA. It will help with the development. Um, I think we can create some real enthusiasm and energy to the community that the people feel like they're part of something that's transformative, that something, you know, to be proud of.
Well, that was, that was one of my questions. So the traffic light at High Street and Broad, the reason that we can stand after my friend Brian McChevere is because I and the town managers and other state officials were doing a lot of work, but Brian took to the road and got two thousand signatures. And that was really the tipping point, right? To, it showed community involvement, it showed community commitment. So that even though the intersection was rated at like a C or a D, whenever the rating was, and may not have been eligible for the light. It certainly stayed on, on the tip sheet and became a reality because of that petition. Should we be engaging in some formal process where we petition, you know, ask for a petition from the communities that we can send to the MBTA? The leaders.
Yeah, and I, I just want to off of what I think that I've done this in some other communities that it's, this will require walking, chewing, gunning, juggling at the same time, which you can do. But you know, you've got the big outlying redevelopment opportunities, which are great and that could all be a vital part of this. You've got the relocation of the, the platform, which is a critical part of it. But at the same time, for local businesses, for local citizens who walk from town hall into church on, on Sundays, seeing physical change, even small scale physical change in Central Square and downtown core is also gonna be great. The news is it's low cost, it's high human effort to your points, the petition, but that those things are just as important um as those bigger things to take place. Good news is we've already got your list of to do, so both the, the progress plan and downtown plan, uh, but those actions can be for downtown. Uh, so just sort for improvement programs, you know, um, those kind of things can be huge. So we just put some problems up that even with time remaining, you know, your typical meeting. But you know, you've been great about asking questions, expressing opinions, but this is the real chance for that gut check on things that were shown. What really keeps your interest and, and should go forward into implementation? What are things that you have concerns like fire station location and standard instructor was very well bringing up? Uh, and what are priorities? Just making sure all voices are heard.
Yeah, well, this may be not on this one. I don't know if we looked into it, so uh, sent in here. We know who owns the property? Oh, we can find that out. I mean, I've had some, uh, people come in and you know, what this, you know, that have been reaching out to them, whoever them is. But you know, I think if all those cases are looking at that, it's really as a restaurant on the side. I mean, we've had a lot of interest and so there'll be three restaurants within sixty five. But you know, but I, I think that. You know, I think what you're missing is that, you know, we don't have that sit down restaurant. You know, which, hey, people, I've had people say, well, my wife and I go out every Friday, we go to the restaurant in East. So you can, you can have, it must not be there. When it's bank card. I think what I'm looking at too is I don't necessarily know if we're gonna be able to solve the parking problem without really looking to expand available municipal parking in certain spots. Yeah, I mean, I, I always say that towns typically don't have parking inventory problem, they have a parking management problem. So you know, like shared Google or Shad at the last presentation, when you look, there's a lot of surface area parking. You know, we need to look at shared parking. We have churches that have parking on Sundays and empty the rest of the time. Um, you know, the library at night is parking. So I mean, it's helping people find that parking. Um, and don't wanna minimize that it is an issue because if you can't find it, they're not gonna. But we also right now, because of the type of retail mix you have, people park with part of the place they're going in the main. So if we can get people to park in a central location, there's a reason for them to walk more than the business, then we can start to manage that, but all of those, I mean, parking is an issue, pedestrian safety is an issue. They're all part of this, but you know, again, it's part of the holistic approach of addressing. One can't happen without the other.
And, and I'll reiterate conversations, conversations that you and I had, had this with town manager as well. So and to Sean's point, there's a ton of parking opportunity in the Walgreens parking lot. And as you said, it's available, but it's not available, right? So, so we need to find ways, you can look at the satellite view and see tons of parking. This came up in one of the other consultant reports. There's a kind of empty parking, but it's not available. You can't park in, in the, I don't know if they still tow on a very active basis, but couldn't park at Walgreens and leave the Walgreens parking lot to some other destination. And that's what we need. We need to find solutions to how that shared party works. I talked to one business owner, which conveniently has parking available near two other um, pretty busy areas. But his concern about allowing other people to park there, especially employees of this other place was that let's say they come out late at night, they slip on ice, break the leg. Who's liable? Who's gonna pay that? And that, those are the solutions that we need to figure out. Because there's, you know, there is satellite view lots of parking, but we need to make people feel comfortable about sharing it. And maybe a financial arrangement as well. I mean, I could see leasing part of, yeah, forty percent of Walgreens is empty all the time, all the time. And yet, you know, at the bank, if it's going to be a restaurant, take that into fencing and make that park. And supporting that, the new coffee shop next door and supporting the, the potential restaurant next door to that, you know?
And one of your examples, you talked about, again, a heart of it. And I think that was like first, successful. Did, I don't know what you know about that group, but did that group form after the idea? Or did that group create the idea and bring it?
There was an other, so I know that we have an office of breaking tour. It, the group formed in formally to, to want to improve downtown life in Bedford. And when they went to talk to the, the main Main Street Center, um, which is statewide organ, organization for Main Streets around. Um, one of their first suggestions was that they form a nonprofit and become the advocacy voice in the community. And so they did so, it was just a small sort of kitchen table organization that they did it. But, but they had some really talented artists, really talented web designers. And they created this sort of prototype that began to tell people about the cool things you might not be able to find in the midst of Bedford. And that became the sort of the, the gelling point in the middle for the organization. So the organization saved our staff. Their organization had grants, the organization became a political voice to talk at council meetings to say, there's something happening with the parking policies and do all those pieces. So it aggregated over time.
And was it, uh, were they a voice for the business owners? And then the residents as well, or was it mostly like?
It was mostly like, it was mostly for business owners, property owners came on board as well. There's a great video that talks about it and I can send that out to those. So look at that talks about how they need to be, and they think such a powerful voice for those concerns. Because otherwise it was everybody who was on group one, you know, that sort of strip mall that got all the economic attention.
Bob, just, uh, when it comes to the, the form based coding, I know you know, the, the project on Broad Street took many, many, many months, some meetings and planning boards and stuff like that. And, you know, it took way too long, I think probably one of the reasons why the project fell apart. You know, so obviously now the, the Birkins property that now I think is starting to become a, a little bit labor too, because now we're seeing some changes that we're planning for here. And I don't wanna see, you know, that potential project all by the wayside as well. Um, one is gonna help expedite the, the permitting and planning process for these developers. Is that all gonna be inclusive under the form based coding? Is that gonna be training to a planning board and all that type of thing?
I mean, it, it, one of the it's a strong point of form based code is the expedited. You know, I think that, I don't think anything we're doing right now is holding the foundries project up. Um, they've got some environmental issues that they have to deal with. Um, in terms of the, the friendly site, I mean, I've offered to meet with Mr. Pascal's architect to kind of reimagine what that could be. Um, you know, some of it, it might be a financial way out to, um, terms of not everyone can go out and borrow money now and make a deal work economically. You know, the larger developers still have activity to do that, but, um, but, you know, I think it's a small lender is gonna look and say, what, what Bridgewater? And so that's a community we need to get out and talk to. We, we need to talk to them all the things. And we're starting some of that, um, you know, I, I met with Old Colony earlier this week, we were, we're probably gonna do some form with Metro uh, South Chamber and Old Colony to start talking about some of the things we're doing. You know, we've kicked around the idea of doing a business improvement district in the central square area, but you know, right now, those businesses aren't gonna pay into something like that. Um, there are facade improvement money through community development block grants. We missed that funding cycle, but we'll look at that, that next year. Um, but there are a lot of tools in the toolbox and we're trying to identify as many of those as we can, but you know, again, I think it's being able to go out to the development community, say that a town council is supportive of where we're going. That's unusual. I mean, I've had developers that I've talked to that are looking at the building next to the old town hall and you know, or say, yeah, we know the zoning that exists now isn't really conducive to development, but we're willing to talk to you about what we can do. Being business friendly, developer friendly, not giving away the store, but you know, trying to be a good partner.
Well, I think, I don't speak for everyone, but I think based on the fact that we've got all these plans and now we're at a point where sort of saying earlier that we need to get to implementation, I think about what we all on board to going in that direction. Take to get there and what we'd like to see now.
You actually just brought it up, um, and I was gonna ask specifically about this. I happen to be a big fan of what Hudson did, but some years ago, just, you know, all of the Australian owners. Um, and so it had actually come up in our ad hoc master, um, thank me. I was on there for like maybe four or five months. And, uh, that topic had come up and I know, I know it's, it's inappropriate at this time, but is it an opportunity where, you know, I think about, and, and not to put this business owner on the spot, but you think about some of those owners like a restoration company where they've made traction in a few communities? Where they may be able to have a little bit of funds, you know, are there business owners like that? Because that's the perfect type of business that we try to, where it's like, they're not a huge national retailer. They're still small enough that people feel that mom and pop aspect, right? But they have, you know, they're mature enough in their business life where are they grouping up with other businesses? Like, are you aware of, you know, not to put the cart before the horse, but sort of like getting that on our radar now feels like it might be.
I mean, one thing we've been endeavoring to do is get out and talk to some of the local businesses that we know have a vested interest and have been successful. Um, so when we talk about the potential to maybe widening the sidewalks in an area like that, so they can have more expanded outside dining. Okay, then the, you know, the business improvement district, you do take the responsibility for the traffic and, and, you know, maintaining the cleanings. You know, those are the things that you look for in the short term. Don't cost a lot of money, um, but create that kind of pride and give them, we've talked before about giving them some identity in terms of a place that, um, they can have some additional ownership of, but you know, then we've got a vacant building right next door to it, and then we've got the juice though, which is great, but then then we go on the other side of the street and, you know, there's some real opportunities there. So now I think that the building next to the town hall is going to sell. Um, and you know, all the conversations that I had is like, you know, I think people are looking at that were the real estate office and potentially a restaurant building. We had two good restaurants downtown. I mean, things will change. I've seen it happen and, um, but it's storytelling. You know, if there was a perception that Bridgewater wasn't development friendly in the past, but we've gotta get over that. You know, and I think that anybody that's paying attention to what we're discussing here and have conversations with us, know that there's you know, a, a different attitude with respect to uh, moving forward. And that starts with you, it starts with the manager's office and we're just carrying out. What was your vision?
So, uh, for those three questions, I'm gonna pick the middle one. I'm worried about driving. Really am. I know, I haven't been here that long, I think this is two thousand eighteen, but just getting from Roach Brothers to the common, certain times a day is impossible to. Okay. Dense, there's gonna be a lot of density there. With Roach Brothers boss, there is, if this were to happen and I'm just really concerned about that. Uh, it's also a state route. So where does the state fit into that? Right now we get hot old city in front of that place and it sooner or later gonna end up in a parade or like on the moon and, um, all those cars, all that traffic, what's, I, I, I haven't been around long enough to see all the studies.
But eighteen is unique because it's not a state road as you come through the center of town. It, it becomes a state road in front of Napa and it becomes a state road as you go down. So everything in between is with the town, um, which is unique. Uh, but you know, certainly, you know, increased traffic i- is, is an issue for sure. But when you're creating residential, that the generation of traffic is maybe in the morning, maybe in the afternoon. You know, the idea is hopefully that people are walking to the university or really gonna take advantage of the proximity to the train. I don't know how many people are going back to work in, in Los. Um, so you know, there's the opportunity for people to have kind of a live work situation as well, but managing traffic i- is always going to, managing traffic is gonna be an issue if we do nothing. Um, and you know, it, so I mean, it's something that we're aware of and as we talk about, you know, bringing all the various entities from the state into the conversation, I mean, that's something they need to work with us. Um, you know, again, it goes back to holistically. There's a cause and effect to everything that we do. Um, and we don't wanna ignore any of those, but again, I think that to everyone's point here, doing nothing is not a really sustainable option at, at this point. Um, so if we're doing something, then we have people who listen to us say, okay, we need your help in terms of mitigating some of these traffic concerns.
Oh, it's that there are great data of real projects, like the projects we showed and how they perform from a traffic generation standpoint. So, you know, it's different from a cul-de-sac neighborhood with a family, you know, with a streetcar. And a full on driveway. So not to say that that's, those are, not to minimize those discussions, but there's real numbers for the cat or both. The estimates that were made on the projects before they built and then what they really generated, number six by trains, number six people that were muted by car. And what were those movements across the day? So that, that data can be out there for you.
Three quick questions. So in Central Square, is it designated as a historic district? So do you guys feel that that is helpful or harmful?
It gets helpful. I mean, I think that I would like to see it designated as a cultural district too. That's the thing. The cultural destination is another thing that we targeted. We talked about marketing downtown. Uh, the old town hall is, I mentioned earlier, could be the catalyst for that, but when we talk about walkable communities, some of the neighborhoods around that have historic homes and the fact that the university was, is, has its own history. Um, so I mean, I, I see it to be, and there's a lot of data that those communities that have designated historic districts who very well economically, it's an economic driver.
And I, I think in concept, the swapping of BSU parking lots with MBTA parking lots will be beneficial to our traffic patterns. But how can we start doing an analysis of that? So we have some data before us when we talk to people about moving the train station.
Yeah, I mean, typically, if, you know, if we get into discussions with, you know, particularly at federal, with federal reality or wherever campus plaza. You know, they're gonna wanna do their own traffic studies and, you know, the thing we know in planning that for every traffic study says it's not a problem, there's something that's gonna come and say there is a problem. Uh, but you know, and, you know, again, that's something that because Plymouth is a state road and Orange of eighteen is a state road, that OCPC or the state can come in and do that now. I know for the Route eighteen board or there are traffic calm studies, that's part of what they, the, the data that they're gathering.
Yeah, but for instance, we don't have anything on Spring Street. So when BSU breaks for classes or lunchtime, Spring Street backs up and Spring Street backs up and which creates a backlog in your office, right?
Yeah, I mean, and and again, I think, you know, those, put that on the list of things that we do have to look at, but that's definitely something that. That would be part of this, and, and again, I think two. Developers are gonna be, they're gonna be asking the same questions.
The third and probably final question, so a BSU student at a public university. Is a different demographic than at a private university? And so their spending habits are different in town, from observation over the years, it's mostly food and entry, right? So, what type of business for that demographic can we, can we talk to 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 pull in? Would that be a a central square fit, or would that be the, um, you know, the plaza fit, or where would that, would. Would there be a designated area where you go, you know what, this would be great for a BSU student, let's try to position it here?
I think, or for BSU students would be Central Square, just because, you know, cost of admission for rent is gonna be more favorable. That, you know, you're not limited to having one coffee shop or one internet cafe, um, you know. It could be secondhand clothing, could be, you know, an antique store, I mean, I think there's a number of uses that, you know. Can be supported by the type of rents that those types of building get, I think. When you're looking at what you're gonna develop at a campus plaza, or you're looking to those people that might be at a higher rate come there. Living in a single family, almost side of town, or are moving into housing that you're creating there, um. And that there's synergy between both of those, um, but, yeah, in the short term, I would say that. The opportunities for the university are more central square.
From a execution perspective, maybe two questions. I think the first one, but I'm inspired, I asked you answers, so, if you were the full project manager, exciting tasks to us. When you think about the next six months, like, what things do we have to do? And by when, to move this idea?
Not on the spot, I mean, I think that if we leave here tonight with a consensus that this is the direction that we're going to go. Then we're going to be on that timeline that I laid out, we will start a public engagement, we will continue conversations with developers. You know, we'll start to let go of some of the property owners, some of these other properties that were brought up and. Start to engage to see where OCPC is exactly, how much information they can share with us on traffic, for instance, now, um. You know, as I said, we have the consultants coming in to start the zoning amendment next week, um, so that will be ongoing. Um, so, and it's really just the acknowledgement from you all that, yes, go out into this direction and. Have these conversations with your constituents, your neighbors in terms of. Get their feedback, share with them this, these types of presentations, or encourage them to reach out to town staff to. Talk about what their ideas might be, what some of their concerns might be.
I guess I'm saying, so that makes sense, so, so, well, then this is the direction we want to go. Then you go off during your time, start executing those things and check back. I think the question, maybe getting more prescriptive and. That interim period where we're socializing, each one of us is gonna take our interpretation of this, so sure. So, I guess I'm wondering more, if you could be more prescriptive. Is that the town council gets together and creates a communication. And then we align, we all vote on communication strategy and move that forward, like, is it that formal?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be that formal, because, but, you know, I will say that, you know, one of the questions that. Particularly on the larger developments, is gonna be, is the, is there support from the town to do this? I mean, is this really going to happen? So I think that, you know, we're trying to establish those milestones in a short period of time, that, yes, this is happening, so this is real. Um, we build out a a a campus plaza, you know, could be a five to ten year. Process, but it's got to start at 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 some point, um.
Are you basically asking, like, we kinda need the talking points, right? We need the talking points that are prioritized, that don't overwhelm people, but like really.
Yeah.
Only until like, what's necessary, and then also the talking points to be able to answer those immediate concerns, things like traffic.
That's, that's exactly, so, so my experience with these bigger projects, I think the fire stations are an example, good one. All sorts of songs and things. I think this, this is such a massive change. That I think getting us aligned on supporting it is also getting us, I don't know, just what it is. Kind of how we answer things.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, that's something that we've talked about, is we've gotta, we've gotta create some kind of handout, if you will. That, you know.
Or went to the town website where we can put our presentation, like the county, like it's always such as a community engagement activity.
Exactly, yeah, just to show, yeah, this is what we're talking about, the, these are some of the bullet points that people might have. And we've talked to, you know, pushing that out through school district, you know, as we said, going to where the people are. But being able to lead them with something that they can hold, and and for you as well. Um, and then, you know, direct them to either to a QR code or website to get more information, and here's the schedule of public engagement.
So I think, well, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I think we've struggled with, we've had. I think that's, that would be really helpful, and the second part of it is, another thing I observed is, sort of, everyone knows it's. And so, we talked about things that. Zoning, inside, I I'm nervous that, you know, no one here will be able to do. And therefore, I think, your stuff, but. We might even go off now, set an downtown revitalization committee meeting.
Well, again, I mean, this is, I mean, again, I know, this is like the first time, I think, the entire council's been privy to. The discussions of kind of what we've been doing in the side committee as well. Uh, one of the things, you know, we've done in the past too is, and what I'd like to see is. A discussion gathering all the the business owners and the building owners of of the center of town and Broad Street, whatever, which we've done before. Uh, a number of years ago, and just kind of going over this potential plan and get their feedback and. Get them on board and excited about the changes, so they might wanna invest in this as well.
But you gotta remember that the the only change here, the the biggest change to this is campus plaza. All these other proposals are, have been talked about. None of these things are new, except campus plaza, and the campus plaza, I'm not, I'm not against. Moving forward, we've seen if that works, but that's, that was not discussed in any of these studies.
Oh, no, no, this is its own.
But that's the biggest piece of this big change to the community, not Perkins Founding, because there's a plan, not Broad Street, because there's been a plan. That the downtown here is a plan of whether we're gonna uh, change the traffic.
But I think, I think the key distinction here is that we would be looking at it much more holistically. And messaging, as we were just speaking, would be most critical. Messaging that we can communicate and messaging that is directly directed at at the town's people, right? But I think what Bob is is driving at, uh, we kind of go a little bit off track, but. We're not here to vote on any, I mean, we can't do that tonight, but I think. Bob is trying to assess, you know, what is our level of commitment, you know, do we have overall consensus to put it forward? Uh, they're, they're gonna be stumbling blocks along the way, there're gonna be a lot of changes as as we do this in route, but are we more or less? On, you know, on the same team, are we looking at this as a viable and desirable. Uh, method to pursue further.
For our hands, I'm telling you, I think, once, I think our hands are tied to a, to an extent, because of the. The initiative that the government, the governor put on the community, so we need to do something to address housing, we know housing is a big issue in the state. So, I'm, I'm on board with this plan. Um, I think the biggest piece of this is gonna draw the most questions and ask the campus plaza that. And I, and it may not, because a lot of people don't even shop in the state, they go elsewhere, so they may not, and 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 the other thing, I think, if we may. Find ourselves not so much on the firing lines or as far as questions go, I don't see a not in my backyard. Initiative here, because there isn't any backyards for people to get up and arms about, so to speak, to some extent.
But I think you're also, I saw this, I mean, the Broad Street project. People, people need to know what's gonna resonate in their favorite radio station, which is WII FM. What's in it for me? You can say, yeah, I I I'm just gonna say collectively, I'm yet to have anyone say that they're against development. They're against improving the town, but, you know, I mean, other than a few people, you know, the NIMBYs and things of that nature. But people are gonna ask, what's in it for me, I I've lived in town ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years. What's in it for me if I support this? If we don't message that at the granular level, then we're not gonna get the overall support. Because then you have people coming out of left field, taking potshots, and we're right back where we started.
Yeah, so, so I, I think we're all talking similar things, and I think, not to speak for Eric, but. Think what Eric was trying to get at, it's like, okay, so like, how do we package this? Like, we gotta package it up, and it's, and to your point, you're right, a hundred percent what's in it for me, tax revenue. So, like, your, your money, your money's gonna go further, everybody's gonna benefit, right?
The number one item on Eric's list has to be Biden's transition, everything that we talked about tonight is pinned to. Changing the dot of where the platform sits, everything.
Yeah.
And it changes the conversation that, that, you know, Kevin and I and others have been having over the past four months. Which is, we've always talked about downtown revitalization, but what we're doing is talking about changing the revitalization north, north of that. To around the train station, and then it, and then it migrates out from that and and then affects the downtown area. As opposed to making the focus of the revitalization downtown and hoping that it spreads from there.
Right, but the double changes to it begins. Yes, the town, the downtown and Perkins and Broad should be nice to move down, move it up. All right, now let's make it still have a major positive impact on the town. It doesn't have, I mean, I believe the train does need to move, run against that, but those other projects, doing something with the downtown. Its traffic flow, doing a facade program. That the Perkins Foundry ever gets developed and Broad Street ever gets developed, those things alone would change the character of our downtown.
The truth about a store like Roach Brothers is, a lot of people in Bridgewater don't shop there. Why would they come and shop at at Roach Brothers in a, in a bigger, broader sense?
You could put it in a brother's market, it's made a lot of. Anyway, sorry.
The only thing that you might find, Bob, when you start to engage the community, and the community, I think, will say to some degree is. You don't wanna see more residential built, they wanna see more business, so we have to find a way to tie the two hand in hand. And also tie it to moving the train, because we need that density in order to move the train. Um, but that's the thing, the feedback you're gonna get from the community, because they, they, they say, we've got enough residents, we don't want more people moving in town. We've already got plenty of residency, so that might be the only kickback I think you're gonna get after being engaged.
It's a lot of education that has to happen, you'll never get the higher end mix of retail and restaurants too, without that. Statement of the population that can support it financially.
But, yeah, at least in my mind, I think the thing that's different about this presentation, and I, and I agree, the Roach Brothers project. Is a piece of it, but I actually don't feel like I was there and saw a presentation, I feel like I saw a presentation on a system. Right, where there are a bunch of things, of juggling and all this, they're drug up. If any one of those things falls, if you get the residential and you don't get the sidewalks, if you get the sidewalks, you don't get the cultural destination, if the cultural destination, um, passed. If the, the system fails, and so I, I think, in my mind, I think that's the thing, is like, are we all aligned on? What are the twelve things in this system? And whenever anything comes in front of us, we're gonna, we're gonna stand behind preserving the system. Like, that, that to me is, I think, the decision.
So I think this is all well and good, but I think it's a little premature. Us to all be in favor of it without getting the input of people that elected us and the business owners that we have to keep him. So, I, I don't like to answer that question right now, because I wanna know what they think.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what was being asked, like, yeah.
Concepts, fine.
But, and if I'm correctly about Rob, I think y'all are asking, like, are we in alignment that, yes, let's go continue to have those conversations and engage. For sure, I think that's a yes, I don't think we're being asked to say. Yes, the council, it's just like. We absolutely.
Definitely, definitely, in this direction, move forward. So, I agree, and the idea that the system includes the circle. You have to be able to answer.
Right, that's why you'll get the public kickbacks, that houses affect public safety, how does this affect schools, how does this affect all these other?
But housing is key.
Housing is, oh, but you are, yeah, most definitely, I think that's gonna be your biggest kickback.
Yeah.
So, I have a question about the three seventy seven for the housing for the. So, I'm assuming that council only likes single family houses or something. But does it count the university housing in the dorm rooms? Because our census block, how it's the housing in the, in the dormitories. And our precincts are predicated on the census blocks, so if we can go that direction with census. Why can't we count the census blocks in for the MBTA?
Well, to be one's federal, one is one's state, and, I mean, and, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages to including university. You know, including university technically makes the downtown census tract considered low moderate income. Which allows us to get some federal funds, um, the other educational institution at the south end of town. Contributes, um, but yeah, so I mean, it's, yeah, I think that's a fair conversation to have, but, um. That is not the type of housing that's gonna support what the mission of MBTA community exists.
Correct, but I think that's additional ammunition for the argument about moving the station.
Yeah.
We can't support a plan if it's only dormitories, we have to have real housing, and the only, you can't build real housing on BSU. You have to build it someplace else, and the only way to build it someplace else within a half mile of the train is to move the train.
I think going back to Sean's question about the NIMBYs, what's in it for me, uh, kind of attitude. As soon as he brought up, well, tax revenue, whether that resonates with people or not, I'm not sure, but I think. Ultimately, the council and my office and Bob and Kim are all responsible for sensible community development. So, community development, I said this before, isn't, uh, you know, bringing another gals to town or another. You know, tattoo parlor, community development is people, so ultimately, to the extent that we're bringing people into town, we want that. Person to be coming to Bridgewater, not just coming to a place where the housing might be less expensive than. Easton or Sharon or whatever, you don't, Bridgewater is a destination, because ultimately that. Supports our community development effort, so, so when you look at it that way. You know, all the things we're talking about here create a more vibrant downtown, a livable downtown, a walkable downtown. So, what about any of that is not community development? That's bringing, you know, good people into town, we want the good people, you know, sure, we want quality businesses, sure, we want. Um, you know, universities succeed, but ultimately, we want, we're a community of people, we want quality, good people. Uh, in Bridgewater, we wanna be in Bridgewater, but I think, I think that's ultimately the benefit, I mean, that's a little ethereal to try to explain to people. Um, with that, why, you know, what's in it for my pocket or, you know, my wallet?
That's exactly the driver, exactly the driver, so, I mean, you know. We, we kind of run into this with, you know, some of the problems we have with, you know, personal credit, you realize, you're not. Bring too much about it, it's like, people don't see the value in investing in things like that, like. Our kids are out of school, my kids aren't gonna go there, and yet we all see the intrinsic value of a great education and opportunity of that nature. So, that, that's great, I mean, we do need guidance, but the guidance has to include what's in it for the individual. Then what's in it for the community, and I, that's, I'm just going from that perspective, because people dive into. That first, not everyone, but I think the majority of people that are very vocal, they look at it, they peel it apart, they say. What's in it for me, and if it's good for me, then I'll support it versus, it'll be great for me, but it's great for the community. You know, we can see the value in that, but we, we tried that before, and it run up against a lot of brick walls, so. I, I'm, and I'm, I'm all for this, I see the value in it, um, but just knowing the people that we deal with. The ones that are very involved, some of them, not all of them, and that's the first, where you have to strike before it became that.
And that's the first, before you have to strike, before it became that one.
Back to action.
I like the idea. You get that sort of FAQ. I personally like the idea of guided community interaction.
Well, then one of the things that we can potentially do as a subcommittee is, is meet with Bob and then again, you know, create thematic steps or what can we do from a council perspective? And then take it to the council from there, uh, to help support the process. So it is, you know, drop, what are you thinking is kind of happening in the coming month or two with, you know, the subcommittee and, and start those things going in the positive direction.
So would it be helpful maybe if that subcommittee can pull together sort of like, okay, you know, listing all, kind of compiling the concerns, things that we know we've run into in the past, really capturing if the sun goes down. These folks already have a plan and maybe can just extrapolate the highlights, prioritize it and then kind of marry those two names.
Well, I think that's a discussion we could potentially have back and forth at the subcommittee.
And the other thing, you know, the councils want to submit those questions to me that we can bring forth at that, at that level. We can certainly do something along those.
We're up for the challenge.
To me, this is one of the biggest things, I think. Bridgewater has done it a long time. And if we're successful, our name will be on the next presentation of the next town.
That's great.
So that's
I don't ever have a whole opinion on success.
Great.
All right. So thank you very much. Um, there are some sandwiches left. If anybody wants a sandwich to go. But I think what you've heard here tonight is obviously, I mentioned earlier, is the product of, of Bob and Kim and the staff really, really working hard to bring in folks who know how to get this done and how to use this. It's no secret that you went out and found somebody that done this before because we knew this was the right time to pay a dress of this. Done all the studies. That is, I don't think they can study it anymore. So it's, uh, it is time for some action. And so we've got the energy, we've got the people, right people in place. So we're, we really are letting them go. And thank you, Justin.
And then you guys all come and we really, thanks so much for the questions.
Thank you. That's what I'm going to ask. And a second?
I did.
All those paper?